Good morning, welcome to the March 10th, 2020 Weber County Commission Meeting. We appreciate you all being with us this morning on this nice spring morning out there. It's 10 o'clock regardless of what the clock behind us says. And what we're going to do is start with invocation by Commissioner Jenkins, Pledge of Allegiance by Kristi Bingham, Thought of the Day by Commissioner Harvey. I'm Commissioner Gage Fror, to my right Commissioner Jim Harvey, to my left is Commissioner Scott Jenkins. Again, we appreciate you being here. Commissioner Jenkins?
Thank you. Our dearly fathers who come for this day, we give you thanks for the blessings in our lives, for the opportunity we all have of being here, for the good lives we live, and for the opportunity we have to be involved with government for Weber County. We pray that the Spirit will attend us, that we'll be able to have open hearts and open minds as we deal with the issues of our county, that we'll be aware of the plight of our citizens and the things that they would like us to do, that we'll do what's right and that we'll feel comfortable in our decisions. I'm grateful for our other commissioners and the fact that we get along well. We give you thanks for all these blessings, Lord, and we ask that watch over all those in this county who need help. We say it in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Everyone, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, and just as for all.
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you Chair Fror. You know, I had an intended thought today based on an experience I had back in Washington, DC, but because of recent news, I thought we would use this chance to teach or inform people of Weber County as it relates to the COVID-19 or coronavirus. I don't profess to know or be a health genius at any of these things, but I respect the fact that in today's age, we have the ability to message better than we've ever done before in my lifetime. I remember when other such viruses spread wildly. One of them, in fact, I remember in the 70s was a new thing called AIDS. And I remember how that panicked all of us at first. We didn't even know quite how it was spread. Then some people knew, and then they confirmed how it was spread. And the mortality rate was 100%, was zero, where everybody died from it. And recently, I learned that in the next eight to nine years, that it'll be eradicated from the earth. Of course, that's a 50-year cycle. I remember diseases like Ebola and Haunty virus and things like that. I have a great confidence in our people of today. I have a great confidence in the people who work in chemistry and in science and their ability to track down and be able to find exactly what causes strains. And I have a great confidence in our Weber Morgan Health Department. Having served on that board years ago, they were actively, back then, doing things for this exact time, for what we're going through right now. I appreciate that they're as prepared as they can be. I appreciate that they've been, they've done mock drills, they've been, they've, they have a cache of supplies and things to take care of the public and are prepared for an outbreak. I want to tell you that Weber County, Weber County has several facilities, commercial facilities that we invite the public to. Not only do we have libraries, we have an arena, a fantastic world-class arena. We have a conference center, a theater, an eye sheet, a shooting range. We have campsites, we have forts, we have all types of public facilities. Our people who are in charge of those facilities attend International Association of Venue Management. In fact, some of them just got back from a venue safety and security meetings where they are actively being trained. This was planned four months and months ago, but we're proactive in making sure that we're, we have the public's best interest in mind. I, Commissioner Fror and I were talking on the way down, he currently sits on the Health Board now, and as they, as we've discussed as a county, it's time people refocus on things that are important. Good hygiene, cleanliness, washing your hands, making sure you sneeze into your sleeve instead of into your hand and then shake it, just good conscious things. Take care of yourself. If you don't have to be in a big crowd, stay home. If you're sick, don't go to work that day. Think of your, think of your neighbors. Just be kind. And I have a lot of confidence in our United States. I have a lot of confidence in our people here and our people around us. I think we have really, really smart, wonderful people, and I've got a lot of confidence that this, this will pass. And so, my Thought of the Day is, Commissioners, is, I've got confidence in our future. In my life, there's always been things that are, that get us unsettled, but I have confidence in who we are as a people. And my plan is, is to try to do what I've been taught by those who are in the business and not panic, but to just use as good a judgment as we've been taught. That's my thought. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner, great thought. And I think you hit it right on the head. This is not a, hopefully a panic situation, but we use good judgment. I probably should announce at this time, and some of you may have already heard, the Utah Department of Health and the Weber Morgan Health Department just this morning announced the second case of COVID-19, and that patient resides within the Weber Morgan Health District. The patient is older than 60, currently in serious but stable condition at Intermountain McCady Hospital. Just as a note, prior to the diagnosis, he traveled extensively outside the US, and it's mentioned that that's probably where he contacted, contracted the COVID virus. So, there is a, a interview, online interview at 9:30 with Utah Department of Health if you want additional information. But just as Commissioner Harvey said, they're just urging everybody to be aware, if you're traveling outside, and more than anything, be aware of, of your personal hygiene. And, you know, we will make it through this. This is not the first time we've seen a major incident. This is obviously serious, to be taken serious, but let's not, you know, let's not lose sight that we will. We will all survive this and make progress as a community and a county. Thank you Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner Harvey? Okay, moving on to consent items on our agenda. Consent item one, request for approval of warrants 2495 through 2523 and 44936 through 448093 in amount of $527,262.22. Two, request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $162,527.58. Three, request for approval of minutes for the minutes on, held on February 25th and March 3rd. Four, request for approval of the ACH payments to US banks in the amount of $170,135.68. Five, request for approval of business licenses. Six, request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Select Health for 2020 Select Value Traditional Insurance Plan. Seven, request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Select Health for the 2020 Select Value HDHP Insurance Plan. Eight, request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Select Health for the 2020 Select Med Traditional Insurance Plan. Nine, request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Select Health for the 2020 Select Med HDHP Insurance Plan. And 10, request for approval of a severance agreement by and between Weber County and Charlotte Sutherland. Commissioners, that's the consent item. Questions?
Comments?
Commissioner Jenkins?
Thanks Chair Fror. So, you know, a month ago, I brought up our H, our ACH payments. And I have since had meetings with Ricky and Jason, talking about this, and feel pretty good about it. But I just can't tell you the uncertainty I feel when I start going through them. And the reason is, is just, it is next to impossible to check them. You, you just, you can't, you can't follow up on these and what they are. And I'll give you a couple examples. There's $150 in here for Krispy Kreme doughnuts. Well, I'm sure we had something going, I decided to provide doughnuts, but I have no way to check up on that. When I look at Todd Ferrario, Ferrario bought something from Wayfair, well, I assume that was something that went in somewhere, but I don't know that. And you go down through here, the amount of material we now buy from Amazon, from...
Online shopping.
Yeah, online shopping is just overwhelming. I mean, it way exceeds 50% of our purchases. It's 65% in some, and you know, it depends on what area. And I've been given, they've tried to give me confidence in the fact that these are all being checked by their department heads, and I have no reason to believe that they're not. But I'm just telling you, the amount that we spend through our P cards and what we spend and how we do it, just concerns me. There's one here for NBF National Biz Furniture for $2,200, $2,270. Well, I have no idea who, you know what? Kimberly Rhodes. I don't even know where to go check that. I have no reason, I don't believe there's anything nefarious there. Ricky, you got, and you've one of the ones I've met with who will try to make me feel good about this.
Right.
And I'm just telling you, it has become so large. You know, when it was smaller, you kind of blow it off and say, well, it's the cost of doing business, and I think we're probably okay. But the amount that we do now is so large that you just have to believe that somewhere in here, there's some fraudulent transactions, but I don't know of any, I don't believe of any. I just know that there's so much goes through this account, it kind of overwhelms me. You got any reply to that?
You bet, you bet. And it's a valid concern, this, as opposed to our purchase order and warrants where the approval comes up in advance, the approval for purchase cards comes after the fact. Now, before anybody even receives a purchase card, they go through individual training where the controls and rules are required. We have a $2,000 limit, transaction limit for all employees except for our purchasing. So the larger, our purchasing department can handle larger purchases. And those all, we just recently completed an audit there and found that they are following all of the same controls that you would find if they had gone through the traditional PO process and check process. And we'll report that through the Audit Committee. It just barely completed, but it was good news. It shows that the controls are in place. So every employee who receives a card is trained in advance. And then each month, that employee has to complete, after they make their purchases, they have to complete a purchase card transaction log that is reviewed and signed by both themselves as well as their supervisor. But that's not all. So the idea is that the supervisor is going to look pretty closely at, they should be looking at all of those transactions on those, on those P cards before they sign it. But after that, we audit 100% of all P card logs in our office, in the accounting office. We take a look and make sure that they are properly signed and reviewed. And we also do, depending on the risk level that is assigned to that user, we do a deeper dive. So we will take specific transactions on every P card log, and the percentage ranges depending on the risk. And we go in and actually look at the receipt, and we look at the transaction to ensure that it's reasonable, that it, that it has something, it was recorded properly, and that it had to do with the business at hand. So, is there a risk for fraud? There absolutely is. Anytime you distribute the purchasing power and have attribution after the fact or approvals after the fact, there is a risk. The nice thing is, is it is contained to, at max, a $2,000 one-time limit, and it would be identified within, I'm thinking worst-case scenario would be a three-month delay after, we would catch that in, in the audit.
Do you audit every quarter?
Yes, accounting does.
Commissioner Harvey?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Jenkins, if I might just say a little bit regarding this, I was at the Golden Spike Event Center. I had a P card. This was meant, and every time I charge things on our P card, we don't see that here in the commission office because we have assistants that take care of those audits for us, the detail of those things that are purchased. But when I had my P card, I was in, I was charged, excuse me, it was my responsibility to every, to do a reconciliation on the 25th of every month. And on that reconciliation, through the US Bank folks, it prints out a sheet, and I had to write down exactly what that purchase was for. So if it was, in your specific case, if it happened to be some doughnuts, or if it happened to be a furniture purchase, or an Amazon purchase, an online purchase, the material that was on that purchase and the reason we needed that material was there. It wasn't always, that's one of the things that escaped, we didn't do, is have to get three bids to buy, to buy doughnuts. But we did go out and just buy, and so instead of, whether we bought Dunkin' Donuts or Spud Nuts, or it didn't, we didn't have to go get three bids, we could just go buy the doughnuts and not have them pre-approved through that process. But every one of those were audited, and then once I signed and attested it myself, then it went to my supervisor, Ms. Jennifer Graham, who either approved or okayed or didn't okay those things, whether or not they were, had to be pre-approved or not. It was intense, every year, I mean, every month on the 25th, it was intense, the trail I had to go through. And so, for me, no matter who, and there's not a lot of people that have P cards in the county, there's very few, but they have to be, anyone who does have a P card, when they make that purchase, has to justify what those purchases were for, and so there was no flagrancy at all in the process. Having worked in both systems, pre approving everything, and then having the P card, it saved us a tremendous amount of time, and I think helped make us more efficient here at the county. I recognize that when we, up here now as the approving body, have to see those and we don't know exactly what they're for, we now have to say, do we trust our people? And for me, I don't like the fact that, that we don't see exactly what those items are, but on the flip side, I have a tremendous trust for those people, especially those who have been entrusted with P cards. And so, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty settled on this. I appreciate the auditing that Ricky's put in place. I know, especially when every one of them, 100% audit, goes through, I know we're using best practice, best practices for our auditing, and we get great reviews from even John Dugle at the state on how we're doing things. So I'm comfortable with our process. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Harvey. Commissioner Jenkins, do you have anything to add?
I appreciate Commissioner Harvey's confidence in the system. And Ricky, I appreciate the fact you audit those. It makes me feel a lot better, and the fact that you just finished one and found no issues. And I'm gonna end it with that, but just so you understand some of my questions, I see one here where there's a PayPal charge to the YCC Family Center in California for $1,250. Well, I, that makes no sense to me. Why would we be buying something from there? And then I see another one here where the purchase order for Philip Reese says XXX, XXX, XXX dash 3859 for $373.56, and that's all it says. So, you know, it just scares you a little, you know, in this deal. I want to have trust in the system, and you're giving me more confidence as we go Ricky, so I appreciate that. I've yet to pick one that I know was wrong, but I have no ability, no ability to know it's wrong. So, you know, when we go over to Weber Human Services, we sit down and look at the stuff that they put through, and it just befuddles me. There'll be chewing gum and tickets to movie shows and things like that, and you'll say, what are we doing here? And they'll say, well, you know, these are awards we give out, and these are people that we try to get to do things, and there's reasons why we do them. But you know, you always question if they're in the public interest or not, and if they're the best use of taxpayer funds. And I'm doing no more than doing that. And so I hope I haven't offended anybody here, but it's my job to follow up on these, and I will continue to do it. So thanks Ricky, I appreciate your notes.
Thanks Commissioner. You know, I appreciate you bringing that up. Obviously, this is, if not our biggest job, one of our biggest jobs that we serve the public is managing the taxpayer dollars that I've mentioned before. And it's easy to look at the big pictures, the big items that we come through, like garbage and other things that, you know, exceed the 100,000 or sometimes million-dollar mark, but it's, it's harder to look at some of these items you just discussed.
Yeah.
And know for a fact that they're legitimate expenses. You and I come from the private business sector, and it's a lot easier for us as we go through our monthly P and Ls to question it and know exactly what it is. With government, we're putting our faith, our trust in Ricky's cost control efforts. As I've looked at, as I've talked to Ricky and his department, I believe that the procedures, the policies in place in cost controls are very well applied. I think they're very well understood by our supervisor. And with the audits in place, I don't know if there's much else we can do Commissioner. I think we have to...
And I understand that.
Rely upon those, should the questions be asked? Absolutely.
When Commissioner Harvey says that we don't have that many P cards out, if everybody went to their limit of 100, for that 170,000, it'd be 85 P cards.
Yeah, true.
And I think there's probably fair others that don't, that didn't use them. So, we probably have hundreds of P cards out.
About 150.
Yeah, 150 P cards. So, anyway Commissioners, my thought is, like I said before, trust but verify. And it appears to me that Ricky's doing a good job of verifying.
I agree.
And as long as that message is sent to our people, our employees out there, they understand this is very, very serious for us as Commissioners in charge of the public dollars, I think that we've made our point.
I'm just gonna say this before you make your motion. Because I knew that's where it's at at next. I will say that my time here on the dais, we've had, I can think of one, maybe two situations where an audit found something, and the supervisor dealt with the situation appropriately.
It wasn't...
It didn't repeat itself. And so, that's what happens when, even when you run a business, when you find something that's amiss, you correct the problem and you deal with it appropriately. And so, running the county as a business, I'm confident in this process Ricky, and thank you for what you and your staff do with regards to the audits. And thankful to all the rest of the staff that, who may have been charged with the P card or trusted with the P card, but do it appropriately. Because when it gets down to it, you're exactly right. It falls to our shoulders, it's our responsibility, and we're trusting you, we trust our folks. And so...
Ricky, do you want to go through the consent items?
Yes, and if, if you're okay, I'll just add one additional thing with...
Go ahead.
...in this topic. We did some analysis of the nature of payments that we do, not P card payments, but actually checks that we issue. I read research a couple of years ago that said, on average in industry, it costs $90 to issue a check, $90 per check in the entire process. I don't think it's that high at the county, but there is a burden, and that's part of why we moved to the P card model, because it's a lower administrative burden. But at Weber County, we looked at all of the checks we issued from 2017 to 2020. 66, two-thirds of our checks issued are under $500, and that accounts for 2.5%...
66% of the checks.
Of all checks we issue are under $500.
Not 66, 66%.
That's right.
Okay.
And that accounts for 2.5% of the entire value that we spend. So, 2/3 of our checks account for 2.5% of our spending. Now, let's reverse it, and it really is interesting. 1.1% of our checks are over $50,000, and that accounts for 66% of our spending, dollar-wise. So it's like an inverse relationship. We have a high number of transactions for teeny amount of actual dollars, and then we have a small amount of transactions for a very large amount. Of course, those are going to be your garbage and your utilities, large, large transactions like that. Anyway, I just thought I would share, share that. Okay, let's get over to our purchases and AP. We issued 17 POs this week for $163,000. 62% of that amount, or $100,000, is for the sheriff, which will go towards purchasing dash cams. 21% or $35,000 is for the library, and that is primarily a few open orders for printing supplies, as well as some programming. For checks, we issued 187 checks for $527,000, just under half that amount, or $244,000 is the ramp awards that we gave to the several cities throughout the county. 9% or $46,000 was for the library, and that was for building maintenance, as well as books, materials, and some utility payments. 8% or $43,000 was for the USU Extension, and that was annual contributions to five different programs out there. 7% or $34,000 is the payment to the Weber Fire District for the Warden Agreement. And then 6% or $32,000 is for the jail, and that was building maintenance and supplies, as well as utilities and inmate medical services.
Thank you. Questions for Ricky? If not, I'm ready for a motion.
I'd make a motion that we can approve the consent items.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harvey. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Now, I do have a comment.
Go ahead.
And going over the bills this morning, I found out that the dash cams for the Sheriff's Department carries a software contract. And I was a little surprised by that. I thought when you bought a camera, you bought just a camera, but apparently there's a contract that goes along with that camera's for software that we pay monthly. There's a monthly fee for each one of those.
Heard that.
Yeah. Well, yeah. Could you prepare a presentation to us, or could you have the sheriff that's in your portfolio?
I can have the sheriff.
So we can understand the expense of that? That's just something I'd like to understand.
Yeah, good question.
Because apparently, it's expensive. And it'd be interesting to know if that same expense goes along with the cameras on their vests, or persons to carry, and that kind of stuff.
A lot of it's...
Body cam?
I think body cam. I think body cam.
Data storage.
I think that's the major component of it.
I'd like to understand that, and I don't today.
We'll get a report from the sheriff in the next couple of weeks, and I'm sure the chief will remind him. Ricky, before we move on, we've got that motion carry, the consent items approved. I read or heard recently that a county in Utah had made some vendor payments from a fraudulent source. And that, you know, as we look at our budget, since we're talking about that this morning, you know, that's a big issue in today's world, where people get a hold of wire transfers and our account numbers and ask to be paid. Do we have in place protection for that? I know it was a county, I can't remember exactly what county. Maybe you have more information on that, Ricky. But that concerns me as much as these P cards, that, because these people are out there on a full-time basis with the intent of defrauding state and county and city government.
Yeah, and that's a very real risk that we are trying to be super diligent on. We just recently implemented some additional controls in regards to any changes to vendor payment details. For example, if a vendor says, "We've changed our ACH information, here's the new bank," or "Please send all checks to this new address," we verify that through a phone call now, not on the number listed on the request, but on our original contact information, just to make sure that nobody's messing around with changing vendor information, and then all of a sudden, we're sending a bad payment, you know, a valid payment to a bad vendor. So we've been looking closely at that and have made some adjustments as well. Just recently, probably within the last month, that we have altered that. Just, we just want to be sure. We want to make sure that it's controlled.
Yeah, I know. And it's a big deal anymore. I mean, I talk to people at the state, and the number of fraudulent attacks they get on a daily basis would, you know, you wouldn't believe the number in the hundreds of thousands a day.
I probably get 20 phishing emails a day asking me, in various capacities, to make some kind of payment.
Right. Thank you for that. I think that's very important, that we stay on top of that, because I don't see that going away anytime soon, probably increasing. Thank you, Ricky. Okay, before we move on, additional comments, Commissioners? Let's move on to our action items. The first action item we have before us this morning is a request for approval of a lease agreement by and between Weber County Library Board of Trustees and the Weber County Library Development Fund for lease of property at the Ogden Valley branch. As Linda Winsgard's coming up, I'd also like to recognize the board members that are with us. Marcia Harris, please stand. Cynthia Mattson, and of course, Sandy Crossland. Welcome. Thank you for being here. Linda, the time's yours.
Thank you, Commissioners. With your permission, I'd like to present item number one and number two at the same time. They're commingled. It'll save time and perhaps improve on the clarity of my presentation.
Go ahead.
The Weber County Library Development Fund was established during 1976, 44 years ago, as a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit corporation, the purpose of which is to promote, sponsor, develop, expand the Weber County Library and its educational, scientific, charitable purposes and objectives. The Library Development Fund may receive, hold, own, manage, use, purchase, pledge, and dispose of property of all kinds for the benefit of the county library system. During 2007, Doug and Elaine Stevens donated property to the Library Development Fund for the purpose of providing a building site for the Pleasant Valley Branch Library. The City of Washington Terrace also provided an easement on city-owned property for the purpose of expanding green space and parking. During 2013, a small piece of property on the west side of the Ogden Valley branch was put on the market, and county officials did not want the library board at this time to purchase that, using savings in their fund balance or capital funding that was available. So in order to protect the Ogden Valley branch from a possible nuisance business locating on the west, this was a very small piece of property, not large enough to accommodate a home. So in order to secure the future that that property would provide for enhanced services at the branch, the Library Development Fund purchased that lot. It is upon this location at the Ogden Valley branch, where the wastewater disposal system was recently installed, and the outdoor education center is constructed. In summary, then, the Library Development Fund owns the property upon which the Pleasant Valley branch, parking and green space was developed, as well as the property to the west of the Ogden Valley branch, upon which improvements have recently been made. While analyzing liability insurance coverage, it came to our intention that because the county's liability insurance is procured through the Utah County Insurance Pool, USEP may not honor a claim if the property is titled in the name of the Development Fund, a not-for-profit corporation, rather than a governmental entity. Marcia Harris, Chair of the Library Development Fund, approached the library board with a proposal to offer a 50-year lease of these two properties at a cost of $1 per year for property, thus resolving the liability insurance issue. The proposal offered by Ms. Harris was discussed at length, and the library board voted approval during their February 4, 2020, public meeting. Utah law states in part, "The library board of directors shall, with the approval of the county executive, and in accordance with county ordinance, policies, and procedures, be responsible for (1) the expenditure of the library fund; (2) construction, lease, or sale of library buildings and land; and (3) the operation and care of the library." Weber County Ordinance Number 2003-7, titled "An Ordinance of Weber County Granting Certain Responsibilities to the Weber County Library Board of Directors and Establishing Certain Policies and Procedures for the Exercise Thereof," states in Section 5, "Responsibilities and Duties." Subject to compliance with federal law, state law, and county ordinances and policies, the library board is hereby granted responsibility for: the purchase, lease, exchange, or sale of land; the purchase, lease, exchange, sale, or construction of buildings for the benefit of the library; and the purchase, lease, exchange, or sale of personal property for the benefit of the library. In light of the Development Fund's request and the library board's approval during their February 4, 2020, public meeting, and as presented during a discussion in a commission work session on February 24, we are now requesting, on behalf of the Library Development Fund and the library board, that you approve two agreements. The first is, as you can see on the agenda there, is a lease between the Weber County Library Board and the Development Fund for lease of the property at the Ogden Valley branch. And the second is a lease agreement between the Weber County Library Board of Trustees and the Weber County Library Development Fund for lease of property at the Pleasant Valley branch.
Thank you. Does that conclude your presentation?
It does.
Questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Harvey, this is in your portfolio. Commissioner Jenkins?
So Linda, this is a discussion we had the other day with you when you came in, right?
Correct.
And I asked you why we didn't have that lease with Weber County and not the Development Fund.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, I just want to make sure I was talking about the right item here.
That's the discussion.
You know, fundamentally, I like the idea of Weber County being involved with this. The reason is because we have three Commissioners here, who says it's our responsibility to manage the county and the entities within the county. And if people don't like us, they can vote us out if they think we did something wrong, where this shields that. And I understand why they want to do it, because it keeps it out of our hands. It's actually the opposite. And so I understand that we just have a basic, different view of this. And that's okay. People have basic, different views all the time. But if you remember in our work meeting, I informed you I'd be a no vote on this because of that fundamental view I have. And so I just want to-
Warn.
I'm getting ready.
I kind of expected that, so. But appreciate you bringing that up. We did have, we've had a discussion, just so the public's aware, we've had a discussion in pretty good detail on this a couple, three weeks ago. And I think that, at least I'm comfortable with the direction you're headed forward. It's my understanding, and I truly believe that we still, as Commissioners, have the ability to appoint the board. So even though we may not have direct oversight, we have indirect by the members that we seat on the board. But Commissioner Harvey, this is your portfolio.
Your com, both your comments are very well received and understood. It was, I would call it, there's no such thing as coincidence. But back years ago, when we were getting ready to bond for the improvement of our existing libraries, back years ago, when the Pleasant Valley Library, just before it was taking place, you'll see today that we didn't have, and we don't have anything on our agenda from the Golden Spike Event Center. We get those about, oh, once every three or four weeks. And that's how it's been traditionally for decades. But in each case, we've had presentations from the library. For decades, I was sitting back in the back of the room. I don't, lucky, or just by chance. Again, I'll go back to, I don't think there's anything as coincidence. But it gave a great chance for me to listen and learn. I, having, now sitting on the library board, I get to learn there as well. I can tell you with the utmost confidence that I know that the people who sit on that board are not self-serving, or selfish, or vindictive, have the genuine interests of libraries at heart. I love their purpose. I love their desire. I love what they're trying to do to perpetuate library space as it continues to transition from when we were a library 100 years ago, the Carnegie Library, to what it is today. And I just really appreciate those who are involved, and I support this 100%. This represents good government. It represents us cleaning things up. It represents efficiency, so we're not having to double indemnify. It just, it's a good, cost-effective way for us to keep it clean, yep, a little awkward. Commissioner Jenkins, I'll give you that. You're exactly right. But I, from what I've seen, I think it's a good move, and so I do plan on supporting it.
Okay, just no comments?
Yeah, I just want to say, I don't, I don't want to represent that this is wrong, what we're doing. I just want to represent, I would do it a different way. So I just don't want-
Appreciate that.
...people to think that we, this is a huge mistake.
And I want to say too, that I, knowing Commissioner Jenkins, he is spot-on. And I could say the same things that I said about the library board about him. He's a good businessman, and he's good at what he does. He's a very smart, well-thinker, and I respect his opinion very much.
Thank you. So Linda, just so I'm clear on, really, this is a matter of liability issues. Making sure that the library board would have liability coverage under USEP, number one. And the title, so the discussion we're really having has to do with where the title of the property is held, whether that should be in Weber County or the Development Board. And again, that's a, that's a policy discussion. To me, to me, you can talk both sides of that, Commissioner Jenkins.
Right, I agree.
And so it's something that we could continually look at, but it appears to me right now, the critical issue is solving a liability issue with that property.
That's correct.
In case something was to happen. So anyway, with that, are you in agreement with that? Is there any other pressing issues, why this should go forward?
I think the liability issue is the major concern.
Okay. Well, that's the way I see it, but I wanted to be clear. Okay, anything else, Linda?
No.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'll make the motion that we approve the lease agreement by and between Weber County, between the library board of trustees and Weber County Library Development Fund for lease of property at the Ogden Valley branch. And I'll make these in separate motions, in as much as they're calendared separately.
Let's do that. Since, so this would be a motion on action item F1 for the Ogden Valley branch.
You have a question?
Go ahead.
Any discussion on that?
No, you can have public comments at the end, Ralph.
On that issue?
Any issue you want.
No, I mean on this issue.
Yep, you can have, you can have comments when we get to public comments. Exactly. Yep, absolutely. So with that, I'm going to place the motion, well, I'm going to second the motion. And then I'm going to place the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Commissioner Harvey, back to you.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we approve the contract buy-in between the Weber County Library Board of Trustees and Weber County Library Development Fund for lease of the property at the Pleasant Valley branch.
Thank you. I'll second that. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Two to one. Thank you very much. Let's move now to request for approval of contract buy-in between Weber County and the North Ogden City for purchase of right-of-way that will facilitate an ADA sidewalk access at street crossing. Linda, that's back to you, unless somebody else wants to, Brian?
I'm going to be presenting this, Commissioners.
Okay, thanks.
So, North Ogden is working to expand 2600 northeast of Washington Boulevard. And at this phase of the project, they're just working to acquire the rights to the land along 2600 north for that expansion project. Unfortunately, the North Branch Library sits right there on 2600 north, and so some of our property is going to be needed for that expansion project. North Ogden has made an offer to the library board for 214 square feet of the property. It's the very far northwest corner of the property, and they have offered $3,365 for that. The library board discussed it. We felt like that was kind of a low offer for that chunk of property. However, North Ogden is offering an incentive of $3,000 if we get that signed and returned to them by today. And so that'll bump us up to $6,365, which I think is more than the property is worth, and the library board agreed. So they have already reviewed this and approved it in their meeting last week, and now it's on to you for approval.
So the amount would be $6,000?
$6,365.
That's a pretty good incentive, in my opinion.
I agree, yeah.
Okay, Commissioners? Comments? I'm ready for a motion.
I'd make a motion that we approve item F3 under Action Items, which is approval of the purchase of a right-of-way at the North Ogden Library.
Thank you. And we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Let's move now to F4, Request for Approval of a Contract Buy-in Between Weber County for Temporary Correctional Facility Nursing Services. Chief Perry, welcome.
Hello, Commissioners.
Hello. You pull that mic down, Chief. There you go.
There you go. Yes, sir. Currently at the jail, we're experiencing a shortage in our nurses, nurse staff. This agreement would allow us to backfill those vacancies with Davis County nurses that work in the jail there, that perform a similar service. This is intended to be temporary, provide temporary relief. The initial term is 30 days, but can be extended 30 days at a time as needed. But we anticipate this to be a temporary solution.
Do we know how many nurses we're talking about, Chief?
As far as our vacancies, currently, we're running six vacancies out of 14. We've, we're in the process of hiring one, so we'd be down five. We've got three more in the interview process currently, so we're hoping to fill those. But this would give us, again, just an extra layer of protection if we needed to call them for assistance and put those shifts out. But we don't anticipate it to be more than maybe four or five shifts a week. We're not exactly sure how many we need. We're doing, we're taking a lot of other steps to kind of backfill for those needs, but this would give us, again, just another option to go to if we need it. So we want to, we'd like to get this agreement in place. We're going to be very cautious about using it, and using it as a last resort, if you will. Obviously, the funding will come from- will. Obviously, the funding will come from those vacancies, so the funding's there. I've been very impressed with our staff as we've moved staff around in-house to cover already. We've been short about three vacancies for the last nine months and been working through those, but as we pushed from three to about five, it kind of pushed us over that, that area where we needed to think outside of the box and come up with something proactive, so.
Great thinking. This would be a 30-day renewable contract?
Correct.
Great, thank you. Commissioners? Questions? Commissioner Harvey?
No. Chief Perry was able to make a presentation to us within the last few days with regards to this very item. I, I support what he's doing there.
Mr. Jenkins, comments, questions?
Comments?
Commissioner-
I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead.
In regards to item F4, I'd make a motion, we approve the, present a contract in Weber and Davis County's for the correlation of nursing services.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve F4.
Second?
We have a second. I'm going to call the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Let's now move to Ralph, public comments. Time's yours. Please come, please come forward here.
Try to keep it under 55 miles an hour.
Must be hard. Okay. Ralph Price, 636 Sixth Street. First of all, I want to applaud Commissioner Jenkins. And I do believe that to be a Weber County, that something should be addressed through Weber County. And I applaud you for going ahead and bringing it to be here and address that. I do want to say to the ladies over here that were here, that most of them left already now, that they do great work with, they do with the library community. But I would like to see there be a little more diversity with inside of the library board, that there might be a person of color and a person of ethnicity that be able to expand upon that board and to not be just white women. And that we might be able to see the growth in the library system for Weber County to reflect what Weber County's history is. My mother, other people, Annabelle Mattson, there were so many, Lina Lopez, all the different ones that were here before us that participated in to make Weber County what it was. These were people of color too, and they were educators themselves. My mother was one for 103 years before she passed. And I would like to see the board be more reflective of that, the color, the diversity that Weber County has. One of the things that we have that separates us from Salt Lake City is our ability to be able to be attentive to, to their efforts to be able to diversify. I again want to say to the young lady that's over here, she does great work, and I see how much admiration that Commissioner Harvey has for her, and Commissioner Ford, you too Scott, and so she must be, there's the fantastic things. I don't want to pick a fence or anything like that, but I would just like to see us to be able to move back into a position where that we see reflective of our community here that we're diversified. And as, we've got away from that in the last few years, 20 years, 25 years, and things once again have been just put onto a back burner. Most people that was inside of a community that I serve and that this, the people of color and this that don't feel they have a chance to, to do that, to be able to serve on boards such as this. The library is an important part. I was Boise State Governor for the state of, the state of Utah, and now as Boise Nation. And one of the biggest things that I had was being able to go to the library and to understand the importance of it within the educational system as I went ahead and educated myself to become a pretty decent guy. So I could sit down and I can talk with old Harvey here and still understand what he's saying. And that's, you know, so I just want to just say that I want to compliment everything that's been done and this, but I would just like to see us be able to take some steps towards finding ways that we might implement, implement a little bit of diversity with inside of the things that we're taking. One last thing that I want to say is that I don't think it right, that you go ahead and you take a vote and approve something before we have a chance to have public comment on it, because one of the great things that you guys have always done is you've always allowed us as a public and have input on whatever things you guys are doing. And that's, now I have great confidence in you guys and that's, and so I don't judge you or anything like that. But you know me, I'm going to go ahead and put a little, a little soup into the bus. And that's, I'd just like to be able to make a comment before you approve it, because after you approve it, I'm not going to get a say. You are going to do what you did. So don't take away the right of the public to be able to go ahead and have comment on things.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments, Ralph. We appreciate you being there.
Ralph?
Go ahead.
Oh, leave.
Ralph?
Ralph?
Ralph, turn around.
I've got a question.
If it's Harvey, I'm going.
Might I?
Okay.
Go ahead. So Mr. Price?
Yes.
Did I understand you to say your mother lived to be 103 years old?
103 years old, yes. I was just letting her know that my mother has 10 volumes of books, that she was on the board of Weber State College when, when it was Weber Tech.
So did-
Started Intermountain Indian School.
Yeah, so that, that football career you had took a toll on you a little, huh?
On me?
Uh huh. Because I don't think you'll make 103.
I'll make 110.
[laughing]
I'll make 110. Boy, I'll be standing up in four or five months. You'll all be racing in six months.
Okay, that's good. Thank you, sir.
Thanks again, Ralph. We appreciate you being here, appreciate your attendance. And just so you're aware, there, there is a difference between public hearings and what we do when we request these. If, if we feel it rises to the level of a public hearing, then obviously we hear the comments at that point in time, Ralph. And, but, you know, you know where our offices are, so, and I know that you're not afraid to come up and speak to us.
Well, I'm not. It's Harvey's department, that's all it is to it. The rest of you guys is okay.
Be careful, don't run over our two guys there.
I can't. This is chief of police. I, I know this guy.
All right, thank you. With that, let's, any additional public comments? Seeing none?
May I make a comment, Mr. Chair?
Additional comments, you're right on.
Mr. Price?
Yes?
I want you to know that in the three seasons or applications are submitted to serve on the library board, I'm not familiar with exactly what you're, I'm not familiar that anyone has applied for that. But I can tell you that we have a German, a Scotsman, a man from France, an Italian, and a gentleman from Bothwell, Utah, amongst others who serve on that library board. And so the, well, I would say that's pretty diverse, but I would suggest to you, because you're a good Pied Piper, to get the word out, if they want to serve on the library board, then they would make application, like everybody on all of our other boards do. And they can do that with our library director, Ms. Linda Wang's guard, or they can also, our gals in the office can help you with that. So that avenue for availability is always open. And we, and they are very, very good at that. So I wanted to tell you that-
Commissioner Harvey?
Yes, sir.
Those vacancies are posted in the paper, aren't they?
Yep. Linda?
The vacancies are posted where? The vacancies?
We advertise continuously on our website. We'll give an application if you'd like to come.
I would love to have that because there's a lot of people of color, you gotta say. They do use the newspaper, but not the website. So that, I apologize for proficiency on that, but one of the things that first I myself to try to do is raise awareness of, so that we can have the opportunity to do those types of things, okay? And I do appreciate that if you would do something.
Thank you, Ralph.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
No, that's just, I just, I thought it was interesting because as I've, even some of those gals there that were here, they're all of different nationality, but they just, they may not be. I, I don't see color, Ralph. I'm, I've been colorblind for my whole life.
Here's one thing that I just want to say on that is, but I want you to know, each one of those are ethnically white. And that's, I'm not saying that the diversity has to be black. I'm just saying it could be Hispanic, it could be Hungarian, it could be different ones of color, Indian descent. I just would like some places of people to broaden the library and the spectrum of the information crowd there.
Okay, Ralph, we appreciate your comments. Well taken. And it looks to me like you have an opportunity here now with Linda reaching out to, to make that happen. So best of luck. We encourage that. Diversity is what Weber County has in the past, and we continue to be, in my opinion, that path of diversity for Weber, Weber County is where we want to be in the future as well. So-
All those Harvons.
Commissioner Jenkins, closing comments?
I just want to say I appreciate working with my fellow Commissioners. We had a case today where we didn't agree, and you don't prejudice me because you don't agree with me. It makes me feel really good. I enjoy working with you. I want you to know it.
Thank you. Commissioner Harvey, anything else?
Dido. Amen to that.
And, you know, absolutely, I think today's a case in point that shows that our working relationship, we respect each other's decisions, even though we may not agree 100% at all times, and we shouldn't. Not necessarily good government when we have 100% agreement at all times. Discussion and having, having a variance of opinion always brings, in my opinion, good decisions. And, and I believe that's what we do as a team. I appreciate both Commissioner Jenkins and Commissioner Harvey and your involvement on a day-to-day basis. And I appreciate what you do and what we're doing for the county. With that, I take a motion to adjourn.
Are we meeting in a closed meeting?
We have a closed, I don't see.
There's one on the agenda, and Mr. Erickson's here.
Okay.
So I'd make a motion that we close this meeting to go into a closed discussion about personnel, imminent litigation.
Thank you. We have a motion to go into closed session? Second?
Roll call. Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Aye.
And Chair Ford?
Aye, thank you. We're into closed session. We'll be back after.